Talk to you. You're up if you're ready. Sorry, y'all. You're up. If you're ready, we're ready for the audit report.
Okay, good morning. Sorry, I didn't, I wasn't hearing anything until just recently, so I wasn't sure where we were at.
Right, thank you.
All right, everyone, I'm gonna go ahead and let me see if I can kind of bring up my presentation. Do you have it so that you guys can see my screen?
No, we can't see it yet.
Okay, let me see. I don't know if it's something you guys need to do on your end or my end.
Asking me to try.
Right, you can try now and see.
Okay.
What did you say, Gemma?
I made him the host, so he should have the ability to share screens now.
She said she made you the host, so you should be, have the ability now.
Okay. Yeah, how about now?
No.
Still no?
There you go.
How about now?
Yes, now we're good.
Okay, I think I got it. Thank you, everybody, for your patience.
Yes, sir.
Well, good morning, everyone. My name is Rafino Rodriguez. I work for Court of CPAs, the auditors for the county. I just wanted to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to present to you today. We had a very good audit for the fiscal year twenty-four audit, and I just wanted to briefly kind of give the results of the audits and let you know how everything went. So my agenda is I'm just gonna give a brief timeline of how the audit went, and then also give the, our opinions and the reports that we had for the twenty-four audit. So we started preliminary communications back in July and August of twenty twenty-four. You know, the audit is really a good five to six month process. There's a lot of work that goes into getting ready for everything for the audits, getting ready for the actual work, talking with, you know, the staff, with management, getting all the information, and then we actually go and do the work. So we had our entrance conference in September, September thirtieth to twenty-four, and then again, the planning and compliance, which is kind of the testing of transactions were done in August twenty-four. And then in October, we went out there and we looked at what we call the substantive fieldwork, which is essentially looking at the numbers, testing the numbers, making sure that the county's numbers are correct. And then we wrapped up and did our reporting and conclusions in mid-November twenty twenty-four, and then sent in into the state by the deadline, and then the state actually reviewed and released and issued the financial statements on March ninth of twenty twenty-five. And then the reports that we had for the financial statements is an unmodified opinion. This is essentially saying the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. And in other words, the numbers and the disclosures are materially accurate for the financial statements. This is the best opinion that the county can receive. The other thing that we do is what's called a single audit, which is testing of the federal dollars that the county spent during the year. We do a risk assessment based off all of the monies that were spent, then we choose a program or a couple of programs to test based off of the risk assessment we do. So for fiscal year twenty-four, we tested the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund, and we rendered an unmodified opinion over that program. So we test compliance for the, the compliance requirements that this program has, and we are rendering an unmodified opinion over that program, which is again, the best opinion that the county can receive. For our, do we have two other reports that we give? One is called the Gagis Report on Internal Control of Financial Reporting and Compliance and Other Matters. That's essentially where we're staying, you know, our review over the internal controls of the county, what it is that we found. This is kind of where we mentioned what the findings that we had. This year, we had one other non-compliance finding. So there's three levels of finding. There's a material weakness. There's a significant deficiency, which is significant enough to be reported to the board, the commissioners, and then there's the lowest level, which is the other matter, other non-compliance matters. And so that was the only finding that we had this year. And then we also have a report on compliance for each major program. This is over the single audit, when I just talked about the federal dollars, and we had no findings over that, testing of that one program this year. The deficiencies in internal control, again, there was no material weaknesses. There were no significant deficiencies. We did have the one other matter that I mentioned, and it had to do with the budgetary authority exceeded in three funds. So the county had a budget and the expenditures exceeded by a small amount in three of the funds. So that was what the finding was this year. Some other items that in doing our audit, you know, we also, along with testing the numbers and looking at the internal controls, we kind of look at the operations of the county and just anything that we can see. Maybe there could be some improvements or suggestions. We kind of look throughout our audit, and so these are the things that we had for twenty-four. Some of them are kind of repeat just because we always want to kind of hit it home. So we know the county had some penetration testing done on their IT environment. And so there was an outside company that the county hired to look over their IT system, and then they had a report that they gave to you saying, here's where some potential vulnerabilities are for the county. So what our suggestion and our recommendation is just to make sure that the county goes over those vulnerabilities, you know, assess them and see if there's anything that needs to be done, anything the county can do to improve them. So you know, you guys had the work done to bring this up. Now you guys need to just kind of go through it and look and just see what the county feels that they should do in regards to that report. We suggest and recommend that you continue to invest in training in the cybersecurity area. We know it can be expensive, but it is a good investment for the county to help prevent a catastrophe. You know, there's been several government entities in New Mexico that have, you know, unfortunately had some ransom, ransoms, and had to pay out a lot of money to get their system back and running. So, you know, we always suggest that the county continue to invest in this area. Succession planning, again, you know, we like to recommend this just every year to kind of look in the critical areas such as payroll. You know, there's, the county's had, you know, some turnover in this, in this area. So, you know, we just continue to recommend that the county looks at, making sure there's somebody in place that if somebody in the payroll area or in any other area the county leaves, there's someone there that can, you know, take up the slack until you're able to hire somebody new to take over that area. And then the last one we had was just kind of take a look at the investments that the county has, looking at the returns and the costs associated with those institutions. Maybe, you know, the county look at any other companies that you could use that maybe you could possibly get some better returns or lower costs in for the investments of the county. Just something that we suggest, you know, taking a look at to see if the county can do, you know, anything better, or talk with your current brokerage company to see if they can improve on, you know, the returns or lower some of the costs for you guys. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve the county. Again, we have a risk-based approach, so we audit our audit planner each year based off any of the risks that the county has, any changes each year. The team was fantastic to work with. We appreciate all the work and all the help that they did, and that and her team, and then Leo as well and her team. We thank you again for all the work that you guys did for, in helping us get the audit done. Again, we're available year-round as a resource for your team to help out with any questions. We value our relationship and look forward to continuing to build on it. And then I'm available for any questions if anybody has any questions.
Y'all have any questions? Nope. Y'all have any questions? Okay.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
The, the non-compliance finding that we had, can you go into detail what that was, please, sir?
Sure. So essentially, what that is, is the county has the budget that you guys do, you know, for the fiscal year, and it has to be budgeted by fund. And we look especially at the expenditures that the county has. And essentially, what this finding is, is what happens is, you know, you guys have a budgeted amount for the fund, and then throughout the year, you guys have expenses. The county finance looks at that and makes sure, hey, do we have the budget to spend these, for these transactions? And then usually what happens is towards the end of the year, there is a change, you know, either with DFA or something happens where there's a change that, you know, there's an extra cost that the county has. And then what the county really should do is having a budget adjustment at the end of the year to say, hey, there was this one unforeseen circumstance we didn't know about in the beginning of the year. So we needed to add a little bit more money to that budget, to budget for that fund. And so that just wasn't done at the end of fiscal year twenty-four to adjust for those changes in those three funds that the county had during fiscal year twenty-four. So what that is, is just, you know, what we do is we come in and we look at and we see, here's the final budget that the county had for all the funds. Did the county spend more than that budget that, you know, the commission approved? Did they spend that more than what was budgeted for any of the funds? And this year, we found that there was three funds that were spent more than what the budget was. So really, what needs to happen at the county is to just have a budget adjustment, get that approved by the commission. You know, usually there's something that happens and says, yay, the county, there was an extra something that happened that we didn't foresee. We had to pay a little bit more this year. So, you know, the commission would approve that. You'd send that to DFA, that would get approved. That adjustment would increase the budget because of that circumstance, and then you guys wouldn't overexpend that budget.
Okay, thank you. Do you have, are you gonna, I was thinking last year, you sent, wasn't it last year, you sent all those commissioners a booklet of the, of the audit report? Are you gonna send one of them out and kind of have them highlighted on where the findings on what departments were the, of the budgets of the budget adjustments should have happened at?
Yes.
Have that available?
Yeah, so we're actually in the process right now of getting those together, and we'll be sending those out probably into this, either this week or next week.
Okay, thank you, sir. I appreciate you.
Yes. Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on. Item four, public request. This is where the public has a chance to speak if anybody has anything. Okay, do we have anything? Okay. Moving on to elected officials and department heads. First off is Clerk, Ms. Park.
I do not have anything other than probate judges this month, probate judge school. Nothing else really coming up. Okay.
Thank you. Row, Mr. Dominguez.
Good morning. Just got a short report here. The project crew is working on last mile of Caliche on AP. They're processing the Caliche. And then we have a crew going around pothole patching and taking care of a few trees. And then the blades, they're out on one, six and W, one on AG and eight, one on AP and ten, one working on L and fifteen, one on twenty-six and K, one south of Elida, thirty-two and a half in AM, and one west of Melrose. And then our new blade was delivered on the nineteen. So, pretty nice machine. Thank you for that. And that's all I got for now.
Okay, I have a question. So on that road that, what is it, thirty out there to, no, the one that goes out towards Sam Southers?
Right, yeah.
Okay, so that first mile is not too bad. Where it turns to go up to his is really bad. But from there, all the way to Landon Bryant's is like horrible right now. Is there any way we could get any kind of Caliche or anything to maybe fill some of that in? I realize it's dry too, but it's really, really bad out there.
I'll check it out and see, see what we can do.
And then the trees out there?
It's an A.
Well, those and out in Elida out north?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, out there on nineteen and all that? Those are really bad, and they've been scratching up people's trucks and doing all of that again, so. If we could get those, I'd like to just yank them out instead of, they just keep growing back.
Yeah, and then you cut them and they get worse, though.
Yeah, so.
Makes a bigger tree.
Is there any way we could just remove those?
We can, as long as there's nothing down there, you know, fiber optic or anything, so.
Okay.
It's just those old trees, right?
Yeah.
You've seen what we've been doing out there around my place, just spraying them with that ground killer. Takes a couple of years, but they don't come back.
Yeah, we just need to get rid of them. They're horrible. Thank you. That was all I had.
So on between four and four and a half from Kilgore to P? That four and a half, you know where Jesse Arbaca put in that place? Used to be a horse farm?
Oh, yes, yep.
Right down there, I got a call about that little half-road that's at the end of Jesse's pens on the east end. There's a little half-road in between there, between four and four and a half.
So that'd be P and a half, right?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yes, P and a half. So that's completely blocked with tumbleweeds. The gentleman said it's not that big a deal, but he said I would like to have it eventually cleared, so.
We'll take care of it.
That's it. Thanks, Juan.
Thank you, Juan.
You betcha.
With the new blade, y'all getting any training with it?
Ah, they went over it, showed us all the, you know, ins and outs of oil changes and filters and what research and all kinds of stuff, so.
Pretty much the same as old ones, as other.
They are. They got joysticks, just like the cats. They're a little bit different on the controls, you know, but other than that, it's pretty much, I think. It's got the front wheel assist, so we'll see what it does in the sand.
Gets stucker.
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you, Juan. Treasury report, Vicky.
Good morning, commissioners. I have for you your January report. Your January general fund cash balance was eight million, two hundred fifteen thousand, eight hundred sixty-two dollars and twenty-three cents. Your ending cash balance is eight million, six hundred thirty thousand, nine hundred five dollars and twenty-seven cents. Do you have any questions? And also, the second half of property tax payments are due April tenth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Manager, Ms. Kirk.
Okay, first, I'm gonna go ahead and let Gemma, do you have a few days listed for the commissioners? Okay, well, I'll cover some other things real quick. On the calendar, Commissioner Munoz brought to my attention that as far as the date, it says April twenty-fifth, but the correct date is actually marked on the calendar for the fifteenth on the commission meetings. So just kind of wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Maybe it's the fifteenth, not the twenty-fifth. It was just in the way that was written. I have a meeting this week with Sheriff Sanchez and Administrator Ramsey, and District Attorney Quentin Ray regarding, he's gonna invite Homeland Security and Federal Immigration Authority. So we're gonna have a meeting, see kind of where that goes and what we're expecting. So just giving you all a heads up on that situation.
What date, what is that?
We're meeting, I believe, tomorrow. I'll have to, I'll have to verify that date.
Can you send a date and time, location?
We're meeting at the sheriff's office. So if there's more than two of y'all that would like to attend on that, let me know so we can figure something else out, but, or at least the two that would be interested in going, I will get you that invite. And I don't know that we're actually gonna have them. I'm sure this will be the first more than one meeting. That's my expectation.
I would like to go to that.
I would too.
Anybody else on that?
Can't go tomorrow.
I'll send you when it is, for sure.
But you think it's tomorrow?
I have it on my calendar.
Brian's in the home, Chief Deputy Holmes.
Yeah, have three in the same place tomorrow. Don't have enough time to do a public.
That is tomorrow. It's tomorrow at ten AM, Sheriff's Office. So.
You already got your two?
Looks like it.
Okay.
Do you have anything else, Ms. Kirk?
That's fine. Tune this out on work if you don't want.
I have a, I have a gentleman that's been reaching out to me to look at doing a tower ordinance within our county. I don't know if that's something y'all are interested in. We can discuss more. I haven't sat down and talked to him too much about it, but regarding like cell towers in the county. And it's a company that does the work and does the ordinances for us, but want to see kind of how y'all feel about that.
Tower ordinance.
Just depends on what the ordinance is.
Yeah.
That's it. So if you want to sit down, he's hit me up a couple of times on the wireless towers. So if you think that's something we need to look into.
Maybe he needs to come to commission meeting and present.
We can do that too, probably. If y'all want to do that, I'll put him up for it. I just didn't know how much interest you would have.
Yeah, he wants to present.
Okay. And then, let's see. And then Ms. Park had also shared with us and sent to you the ground lease agreement, so I take it you all got that in your email. Okay. And that's really all I've got right now. Yes. So when looking at budget meeting dates, some that we have available that seem to work most open for Annette, Mandy and I, and then also some feedback with department heads would be April.
Yeah, can you go to the thing so we can, everybody can hear you? Sorry, thank you. Sorry, thank you.
Sorry, so for budgeting meeting dates, some that are open for me, Annette, Mandy, and then also quite a few of the department heads that I have heard from so far are April seventeenth, eighteenth, twenty-second, twenty-fifth, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and the thirtieth, and then also May seventh, and that's just for the departments that are waiting to hear back on grant funding would be the May seventh. So that way we have that information to work with as well.
Can you repeat them, please?
Yeah. The seventeenth, the eighteenth, the twenty-second, the twenty-fifth, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, thirtieth, and then May seventh.
We're gonna have a whole week straight?
There's, it's broken up, but, and those aren't set dates yet. I'm still working on scheduling, but for right now, that seems to be the openings that we have available right now.
How many days are you wanting to do this?
We're working on that. The shorter, the better. We can cram more budget meetings in, that would be fine.
So the seventeenth and eighteenth.
No. Okay, so maybe not the thirtieth? Nope, not the thirtieth. I apologize on that.
Not the thirtieth?
No.
Well, April seventh is just kind of, I mean, May seventh is just kind of out there in La La Land by itself. Is that for?
It's for the departments that are depending on grant funding and waiting to hear back on those. A lot of them won't hear back until the second, from my understanding, from some communication with them. And then it's just finding an opening that would really work for mass majority to have everyone there.
Okay. So you're only wanting, we don't need to book all these days off. Okay.
I'm still working on getting official schedule, but right now, those are some general dates.
Okay.
Just trying to get what days are available for y'all as well. So you've got a variety of days without just limiting to just two, three, four days. So, you know, we want to work with you, and then we'll get everything else lined up.
Are we not closed on Good Friday?
No, it's on the Monday.
Okay.
Well, I definitely won't be here sixteen, seventeenth, eighteenth. I won't be here that, that week.
That week's off.
So we'll take those two off.
And that's a busy week for the commissioners anyway, right? Because they're gonna be on for the retreat and stuff.
Retreat's the, we'll be back, yeah, it's the thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth.
And then we have a commission meeting the fifteenth.
Yeah, so if we could take that, we won't be here the fifteenth.
Yes, we will.
Yes, you will.
Yes, we will.
Evening.
Oh, yeah, that's evening. You're sorry. I'm sorry. You're right.
Oh, she could talk about that retreat, yeah. So these dates are off.
So sixteenth, yeah, seventeenth and eighteenth's not gonna work, so. Twenty-fifth won't work for one because we're gonna have commissioners. So we're down to twenty-second, twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. The twenty, no. So twenty-second, twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth.
Twenty-belt is all.
We don't have to have all five, but.
If we did the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth?
And the seventh?
That way we could just bounce to the seventh. Does the twenty-seventh, does twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth work for all y'all?
Twenty, twenty-ninth?
Yeah, that way they're right together, and we could just block both of those off?
May seventh, I'm out. No, twenty-second is in, twenty-second, twenty-eight.
And twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. It's off.
It's off.
And May seventh is all.
How are you for the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, Paul? Not here yet.
Keep Paul to check with our spouses on.
Can't we do the sixth? Can't we do the sixth after the commission meeting? Why don't we do the sixth, May sixth, after the commission meeting?
Okay, and how are y'all with May sixth after the commission meeting? Instead of, instead of May seventh, we'll move it to May sixth after the commission meeting.
We'll break for lunch and then come back.
Okay.
I'm in.
Roy, he's already thinking about lunch on May sixth.
So we'll check with, when these two get an answer on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, and then we've got May sixth? Because we're already gonna be here May sixth, so we can just do it after lunch, do the budget finish. So when y'all decide if you can do the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth? this side can. We don't know about that side yet. Okay.
You're buying lunch. Sure glad we're out on the point.
All some Sporitos it is. Okay. Y'all have all that?
Yeah, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth and sixth.
Yep. Unless something changes. Okay. Anything else in that? Okay.
That's all I got right now.
Moving on to commissioners. Y'all have anything?
Uh, yes, I do. Who opens up our mail?
April.
When it's addressed to us, should we just go ahead and get it without it being opened?
Yes, I'll have her read it before she.
Yeah, I think there was supposed to be some cash in there. Well, I don't know. It's supposed to be.
I didn't open it, so I can't verify.
Might not have, you know, that's tampering with.
Mail.
It's federal offense.
Does it say Roosevelt County on it first?
No.
Roosevelt County Commission, Commissioner, royally Chris Well. Paul's was open. I guess everybody's.
Everybody's was up.
Same envelopes. But anyway, I'm just saying.
Okay. We'll get that taken care of.
You have any big share or permission? I'm sorry, I still agree, Sheriff Parker.
Yeah, that's all right. So I want to put on the next agenda if y'all are good with it too. Um, I've talked to Randy Knight quite a bit about it and not saying that we have to use red. We're going out for us. It was not cool again because we're literally losing tens of thousands a year in savings by not buying bulk. And I think it'd be a really good idea for the county to start doing that as well. We're going to have to look into some other, I know why it was stopped previously. We're going to have to look at some other ways, you know, getting a camera on the island, maybe a card reader. Um, in talking to them and doing some of the research on it, those card readers are about eight thousand dollars with a two-year warranty on them, but they'll more, more than pay it for themselves in one year. And so even at ten cents a gallon, do you have a rough idea how many gallons of diesel y'all use a year? Randy told me, but I want to say it was like over thirty thousand a year in savings by buying bulk as opposed to what we're doing now. So I want to get an idea from y'all before I did put that on the agenda next time.
I'm okay with it.
And then, uh, Paul and I attended the Cannon Committee, Military Affairs Committee meeting the other day, and everybody was talking very, very highly of it. Cannon boasted spending of millions and millions of dollars. So uh, within our communities, I don't know how much of that Roosevelt County saw, but I would, I would be interested in that. You were on that phone call too.
Was.
Yeah.
There's a grant that has our name on it.
Right. You remember hearing how much they, uh, it was a lot. It was a lot. I was just kind of curious. If there was a way we could find out how much of that Roosevelt County sees.
And that, a lot of that has to do with, uh, we have military housing still over here and there's a lot of people that work in our community at
Right.
And that's where they get the money or the figures from. I don't know how much within our county is, but it's a sizable amount.
Do we still have military housing here?
Yeah. Well, I don't know about that, but maybe they rent.
Right, they do.
They do. I've met some of them.
Right. I know I see a bunch of them at the, the Vineyard, the few times that I've been out there. That's a local favorite hangout for a lot of the base places. But anyways, just to give everybody an idea of what, what that meeting was about. And the last thing I want to talk about and ask if y'all are interested in hearing as well is, I'd like to, I've been getting a lot of phone calls about noise in the county. Um, I know there's no ordinances as of current. Brian's still up in the hall. But what about opposing a noise ordinance in subdivided areas at minimum or noise ordinance within so many yards of a neighbor's house or something? Because we've got some people living in Floyd and they say on a still calm night, there's one neighbor out there that just serenades the whole town. So um, and they get really tired of the same beat all the time. So I don't know what y'all think about looking at a noise ordinance, but that's something that I think might might be good. Brian, you got some words on that?
Yeah, that'd be great. A lot of people are not awesome.
Mm-hmm.
That's my words on it.
I know it's, as the former sheriff, that was a regular call for service was my neighbors are turning their music on and there's really nothing we can do because there's no, no enforceable ordinances within the county. So.
I've had calls on the same thing. But it's right around the outskirts of our Dallas.
Mostly subdivided areas like the Westview additions and yeah.
My first thought would be volume, but also people that just leave their bass music going. That bass will travel through houses for a block down the road.
No.
Here with your walls is pretty unpleasant.
And I, I'm totally against any kind of ordinances in the county. I, I don't, I don't like that. I mean, people live in the county for a reason. They don't live in the municipalities. And I mean, we're going to have it from everything from somebody, it's going to end up being, it can be noise, it can be smell, it can be sight, but what one person thinks is ugly, another person might think is beautiful. Same thing with the smell, you know, sound, things like that. I mean, I understand the sound situation because it carries, but at the same time, once you open that can of worms, it's pretty hard to put the lid back on it and you're going to, because I mean, we have it all the time from everything and we've had it from everything out at the um at the barn at Tinsley Crossing. I've had several phone calls on that because of the sound, because of the noise when there's a wedding or there's something out there. So, and that's not in a subdivision. So that would exclude that. But I get, most of my calls I get are from that area. So to pick and choose, I think would be pretty hard if we're going to put one in the county. It's either going to have to be countywide or it would have to be. So that's just my thoughts.
And I think what you're saying makes a lot of sense and maybe it can be refined better. And if you have anything, please chime in on this, but um maybe it could be refined better to just subdivided areas and, and I mean, I see what you're saying. It makes perfect sense. That's a business. Obviously, we want to support our businesses. But when a guy's got to work at five o'clock in the morning, the music's still blaring at midnight. It makes it kind of difficult for a good night's sleep. So.
But again, that one place isn't a subdivision. It's a, but if somebody's having a wedding that night and like the person that's calling me, they're keeping them up and, but we're excluding that place because it's not in a subdivision. So we're not helping that guy that's got to get up the next morning.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Parker, the only thing I'll add is that in order to make these types of ordinances enforceable, they have to be specific and and they have to have specific criteria, uh, usually measured in decibels. So in order to do that, we'd have to be very specific in the decibel limit we're going to tolerate. We're going to have to equip our deputies and code enforcement people with decibel meters. Uh, you know, that type. So I mean, it becomes somewhat of a challenge to, to decide what levels are tolerable and whether or not we have, you know, what, we want to invest in the equipment and the training in order to make that happen. Otherwise, setting standards such as unreasonable noise just is too vague and unenforceable. But I'd be happy to look into some stuff for you if you want me to. See what some other counties might have done.
Well, I don't want to go any further if the rest of the commission's not willing to investigate it. I mean, it's uh, but if you are, I would like to investigate it a little more.
Whatever you want to do. Do you want to investigate and we'll go there?
Yeah.
I'm with Tina on this one.
So yeah, go ahead and Madam Chair.
Yeah, let's find you a best.
Go ahead and look.
Go ahead.
Bring back some ideas.
And surprises of the decimal meters and still, you know, what's it going to cost us?
Yeah, I'm not sure what's the cost, Commissioner. You know, it's whatever, whatever the cost is, I'll let you all try to figure out that as well.
Have Mr. Holmes check it out and get, you know, if we go, if we're going to do, you know, let's get everything, get, get all the ducks in a row and.
Yeah, I mean, the way to do it would be to find out what other counties have implemented and how they're enforcing it. What tools are they using that have already been held up in court? If it's been held up in court, I mean, there's probably a lot we could piggyback just finding out what other counties have already probably led their way on it, or maybe every county's failed at it. It might be worth pursuing, but we could probably reach out to the counties and find out a bunch of information.
And just, are y'all wanting to limit it to just a specific noise?
No, I mean, I, the only reason I brought it up is because of the amount of phone calls that I'm getting, you know, and it's not just from Floyd, it's from other areas too. But I, I'm not saying that this has to go through, it has to be done. I would just like to look at it further and see how would, how we could refine it. Because as Commissioner Dixon said, I don't want to interfere with businesses and that kind of stuff whatsoever, you know? But I do understand people that have lived in this house for twenty years and then suddenly a neighbor pulls in and they get no more sleep, you know, so.
So are you talking about inside the city limits of Floyd or outside?
Well, in the county generally.
In the county, outside the municipality.
That's all. Thank you.
You have anything?
No.
All right. And I have nothing today. So moving on to new business, a discussion and consideration to update Roosevelt County's land use and mineral plan. Um, so on this one, I would like to know if y'all would be interested in updating our land use and mineral use plan. Um, so I got um copies from the Roosevelt County Soil and Water. I got it from um Border Soil and Water and I've gotten a couple, um, I got the one from the gentleman in South Dakota that I talked to y'all about last time on it and the way that they do it. And so I was wondering if you guys wanted to get together and maybe we could do like a combination with um soil and water and border soil and we could do hours and kind of mix it into where we cover all of them because we don't really have mineral use in ours. We only have land use. And I think we need to include mineral use in our plans and with all these new technologies and things coming in, I think it's important that we have that out there. So I was just wondering if you guys were interested and if you were, I would um like us to start working on one if that's something y'all were interested in doing.
Yes.
Yes, I think it's a good idea.
Okay. So um, I'll just put something on the next agenda. I thought maybe we could do something with combining those that we have, the one we have, and then the other two within our county and trying to combine them all because we need to be able to support like Border Soil or Roosevelt County Soil and Water. We need to be able to support what they've done. They've done a lot of research and put a lot of work into theirs, but theirs is not as enforceable as ours would be. So it'd be a way to support what they've done and what they feel like we need in Roosevelt County. So I thought maybe we could just combine them together. Maybe is that.
Reinvent the wheel.
Pardon?
Well, why reinvent the wheel?
Okay. All right. So I will bring that back at the next one and try to have a type of resolution that we can work on. Thank you. Okay. Item six B, healthcare assistance, Ms. Weems. And.
Second.
Good morning.
Got a motion in a second going to indigent?
Yes, yes.
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 Motion carries. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. In this batch, I'm coming with you guys um to recommend um approval. There were five um claims for seven thousand ninety-nine dollars and eighty-three cents. I recommend approval of four for five thousand eight hundred nine dollars and eighty-three cents. Um, disapprove one at one thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. Fedco approved one claim, three hundred twenty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents. Disapprove one at one thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. That patient had Medicaid on the date of service. Clovis Cardiology Associates approve eight, eighty-one dollars and forty-eight cents. No um disapproved claims for that provider. Roosevelt General Hospital, one claim approved at five thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars and four cents. There were no disapproved for RGH. Emergency Services of Taxas approved one claim, two hundred eleven dollars and sixty cents, and there were no disapproved for that provider.
I'll make a motion to come out of indigent.
Thanks.
Got a motion in a second, Commissioner Greider?
Yes, yes.
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 Motion carries. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve Clovis Report.
Second.
You want?
Motion.
Make a motion. Got a motion in a second.
All right.
Commissioner Munoz?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven A, Resolutions, Ordinances and Proclamations, Request for Approval of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifteen, authorized in Roosevelt County to direct the publication and mailing of notice, notices to it of its intent to consider an ordinance authorizing the issue of the proposed industrial revenue bonds entitled Roosevelt County, New Mexico taxable Industrial Revenue Bonds, DG Sundale LLC Project, Series twenty twenty-five project in an aggregate principal amount of up to seventeen thousand or seventeen million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand and including DG Sundale LLC to proceed with the project. Mr. Kelton, next, Tara.
Good morning, County Chair, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Peter Kelton. I'm back again. Uh, uh, I'm with the Roadie Firm, uh, representing Roosevelt County. Uh, before you today is a rather simple resolution. Uh, it would accomplish authorizing the county uh to direct the publication and mailing of notices uh regarding its uh intent to consider an IRB ordinance authorizing the issuance of the see seventeen million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of industrial revenue bonds. Uh, this resolution would not obligate the county to actually consider the ordinance. Rather, it would simply authorize the county to take the steps necessary to provide notice that it intends to consider the ordinance. But again, no obligation to push forward if the county decides not to uh actually consider the ordinance or at a later date decides not to actually issue the bonds. Again, this just allows the process to continue in the ordinary course. Uh, discussions would continue on items like the uh, the deal terms for the IRB, including pilot terms, uh, road use maintenance agreement, um, the IRB lease, so on and so forth. Happy to address any questions that you may have. The, the notices that would be mailed would be to the local taxing jurisdictions, which would include school districts, municipalities, and also the county assessor. And then the notice that would be published would be two weeks in advance. The notices that get mailed would need to be sent out a month in advance. As a result, the earliest that the ordinance could be considered would be at the May sixth uh County Commission meeting.
Now move, we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifteen.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, Commissioner Greider?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Commissioner, the emotion, the um resolution number is actually twenty twenty-five fourteen. It was incorrect on the agenda.
Okay.
So we need to amend the agenda.
It's corrected.
Okay. Do what?
Said I copy and pasted too quick.
Oh. Seven B, Consideration of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifteen this time. Acceptance of and approval of the FY twenty-four annual financial audit. Reading that, do I need to go ahead and redo the vote on the fourteen?
It's a given there.
Okay, thank you. We got a motion to consider the resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifteen. And I'll second that with a motion in a second, Commissioner Munoz. And I'll second that with a motion in a second. Commissioner Munoz?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, contracts, agreements and procurements. Eight A, request for the approval of the equipment. And premise lease, premises lease and service agreement between Roosevelt County and the Food Bank of Eastern New Mexico. Diana Sprague.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. I'm Diana Sprague. I'm the Executive Director for the Food Bank of Eastern New Mexico. Though we moved into the Roosevelt County food pantry about a year ago. As I was reviewing our insurance policies, I realized that we never actually received and executed a lease agreement. For that property at six hundred North Avenue Kane, so I'm here to ask for y'all to vote on that lease agreement so that we can get it properly insured on our end.
Yeah.
Move, we approve.
Got a motion?
Or have, whatever we gotta have.
Okay, got a motion in a second, Commissioner Greider?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. All right, thank you all. Thank you. Okay. Request for the approval of the land use and management agreement between Roosevelt County and Roosevelt County Community Development Corporation for the Management Services of the Roosevelt County Enterprise Center, Ms. Diaz.
Morning Commissioners, thank you. This is our annual lease agreement with the Enterprise Center at one hundred South Avenue Eight. And just asking for the renewal of our contract.
I was gonna ask you, Randy, do we need to go out for RFP on these every so often or? Or what do we do with this?
Madam Chair, it just looks like this is simply a use agreement. You're not purchasing any.
Okay, so we don't have to.
Use your premises.
We don't have to go try to find somebody else or anything, because I know we did that once. I just didn't know if we had to continue.
But you have, you have done so in the past, and so it probably does. So you did it last in twenty twenty-two.
So when do we need to do that again?
That's three years ago. So probably next year.
Next year? Okay, perfect. I thought you were gonna say that. Thank you.
And just for clarifications, I don't, we didn't ever have any modifications to the contract, did we? Okay.
No, this is still the same one I pulled from last, the last.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you. Okay, we got a motion and I'll second it. You want to second it? Okay. Got a motion in a second, Commissioner Greider?
Yes.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And any media? Did the media send you anything? Okay. So now we will go into executive session.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask? Am I able to ask Peter Kelton a question about this?
Sure, go ahead.
On our little. Financing schedule. Of the IRBs. You have on here April fourth. Which is three days from now. Parties computer discuss negotiate pilot terms. We haven't even started yet.
Right, so that, County Chair, Commissioners. That's really just a placeholder to remind everyone that those discussions need to continue and be ongoing. There would be no ordinance consideration I would envision without careful consideration of those terms. One additional option would be similar to what was done at the, or for the last IRBs, which is consider an ordinance, but not. Authorized the closing or the issuance of the bonds. Until a supplemental resolution is adopted, that would set forth the exact pilot terms. But that's a good flag. To my knowledge, that the only real discussion of the pilot terms was, or. Consisted of references within Nextera's presentation at the last meeting. But to date, no real discussions have, have occurred. But just wanting to remind everyone that this is something that needs to occur and we need to be giving a careful thought.
So. So my next question is, when do we need, when do you want to start working on that with Nextera?
So I'm, I'm happy to begin those discussions after this meeting. I already have a, a call lined up with Nextera's counsel. Once the meeting concludes on, you know, next steps, so happy to note that that's something that we'd like to begin in earnest. Happy to discuss as well with the county manager. What the. Commission's desire would be on how to approach sizing the pilot. Whether that would be keeping the pilot consistent with the terms of past deals or how to address that. This, this project is substantially smaller than the Blackwater Solar Project. I don't know how that necessarily weighs in either direction for the County Commission, but yes.
As far as I know, this is two million more project size than Blackwater.
So the, the Blackwater Solar.
Fifty, wasn't it fifteen million?
No, the, the Blackwater. Apologies, Commissioner. The Blackwater Solar IRB was three hundred fifteen million. And this one is seventeen, three hundred twenty-five thousand. So the.
Three, I had the fifteen up. That's right. There was a three in front of the fifteen.
No worries, no worries. And to be totally honest, the, the size and the. The numbers that are thrown out and just generally the, the nature of these. Because these are developer funds that are being discussed. It, it ends up being, these sorts of things do happen, but. Another way to conceptualize the size of the two projects is that I want to say the Blackwater Solar Project might have been around one hundred sixty megawatts or so of generating capacity versus. Nine for the, this DG Sundale Project. So last time around, we sized it based on the megawatt hours of generating capacity. I don't know if that's also the direction that we want to move in here. Usually that's a pretty good approximation of, you know. The size of the project, the, the value that the county is providing and serves as a good reference point. But I know that that's something that we're going to want to, to think about and don't want to. Make anyone have to make any sort of commitments right now, but absolutely, we, we want to begin those discussions sooner rather than later because. It, it, those are very important deal points.
Well, that's kind of what I was thinking. That's the reason why I want to ask you about it. And last time we formed a committee. Blackwater deal, and I didn't know if you, if that's what you want to do now or do y'all want to talk about now, you know? I didn't know. What the thoughts were. As far as commission go. So.
I'm, I'm good. If you want to make a committee, that way anything that we have, I'll know exactly who to go to with these items. That would be absolutely wonderful. Get a start on that.
This is your district? Your ideas.
There's you. There's my two.
Well, I guess put me and Paul down there. I don't care.
Paul's like, thank you.
But it, but anyway, I just, like I said, I know. When you just got up there, we was talking about that. And I seen this the other evening whenever I was at the house and this schedule. And I seen it April fourth. I just, I was going to ask you about it, but it slipped my mind to just want to go, and I thought we need to get on to this, so.
No, it's, it's a great flag. Thankfully, we've got lots of time to, to work through it and we've at least gone through the process recently. So it should be familiar enough that it hopefully won't be reinventing the wheel, but. Every project is its own unique set of circumstances, so I, I think that makes a lot of sense and put together a good team, so.
Well, thank you.
With that, I'll make a motion to go on executive session pursuant to ten dash fifteen dash one NMS eight nineteen seventy-eight H two. Attorney client privileged information pertaining to threatened or pending litigation, contracts under limited personnel matters pertaining to the county manager and formal grievance as needed. Any further action necessary as a result of close session. Executive session. Got a motion in a second. Commissioner Munoz?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. I mean, with that, I think we need. Everyone out.